I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our March meeting, Tuesday, March 12th, it's 11 o'clock. Thank you for being here, very short agenda this evening, which I'm sure everybody's thrilled. Yes, I can do this tension a little bit. We need to approve the minutes from last month of council, see those via email, are there any corrections, deletions, changes? Suggestions for the February 13th meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to shut the mask down.
Okay, motion by Ray Black and taken by Chris. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor to defer the February minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, motion is approved, pass email, then we'll pass run, probably that needs signature from the council. Listen, Mr. Chimala, if you want to. All right, I think we have a couple of updates from Heather Health, Department before the meeting for the Health Department and also the Highway Accounts.
Yeah, okay, so one thing that I did need to do is have approval from you. We are in the process of having the Jefferson County Highway Department and the Jefferson County Health Department have clearing accounts essentially, so their daily transactions will be deposited into that account and then at the end of the month, they will balance that account and then bring one deposit to the county for us to put that in the funds. That's going to simplify our accounting, not have near as many receipts in our daily transactions, but also have more efficient workflow between us and the other departments. So I just need a motion that you would adopt for them to do that.
Permission for the County Highway and also the Health Department, obviously two names on that count. Just curious, is as the auditor and or treasurer either, those names also necessary?
So it has two people from, I know the Health Department's gonna have two people and it might just be Bobby out at the Highway Department, but then it has my name and I am a signer and then the same way with Megan, she's also a signer at those accounts. Which is the same way that the Animal Shelters account is set up in the Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
And community corrections too.
There's multiple people checking on her, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And they are still subject to State Board of Accounts audits.
I'll make the motion to approve that. I'll second it.
Second, no carry. Any other discussion questions for Heather? Thanks for the motion, I second. All of those in favor of adding those accounts for those departments, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay.
The other item that I wanted you guys to review tonight is budget dates. We've been several different ways throughout the years. I was just proposing that we do the Monday and Tuesday of our regular business meeting this year in August, if that's available. It's not on Chris's birthday this time.
No.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yes, Monday, Tuesday, and I think we traditionally start at eight thirty?
Yeah, around eight thirty in the morning and then.
Wrap it when we're done.
When we're finished.
Sometimes late, but obviously Tuesday, we need to wrap up by five for the standing caucus council meeting. I know that means obviously, you know, requesting or taking days off. Have outside day jobs, is everybody okay with the 12th and 13th? We can probably hold off maybe closer to those dates, we traditionally will set a couple extra evening dates to get those on the books as well. For additional discussion, which is often necessary, hopefully too. That is my team, there were four extra days, but everybody okay with Monday, the 12th and Tuesday, the 3rd? Great. All right.
I will go ahead and schedule for that. And then, other than that, I was just gonna give you a quick update with our office. We're continuing with the basement cleaning, we were approved to shred an additional eighty boxes of expired records. We have now installed Lao on every, every department now has Lao on at least one computer and Kristen and I are getting ready to start going around and training. I was able to do three departments today, so just a quick rundown and then the employees or the departments are able to pull their own reports and have their financial data at their fingertips. We are on target to start remote claim entry by the end of the year for a small test group. So the department, instead of turning in a paper claim to us, they will be able to scan in their invoice and enter everything electronically and submit to Kristen for approval. So this is going to help with our space issue, because we will not have boxes and boxes of claims eventually. When State Board of Accounts comes, they will just have a login and will be able to go nearly paperless, so. And then trash cards is the other thing we've been doing a lot of and we have so as of three eight, we have sold seventy nine thousand dollars of trash cards. And for all of twenty twenty-three, we sold eighty two thousand, two hundred and ten, so sales are definitely up. That's all that we is, well, a portion of what we've been doing.
And is the hope with the small pilot group with the remote submission for claims, is the hope then that, you know, workout kinks that then in twenty twenty-five, we would get additional departments?
My personal goal is by the end of twenty twenty-five to have everyone submitting one ton of claims, so.
All right.
Make sure everybody reflects that in their office budget and paper.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, that's what I was gonna say, right?
Well, and just our office, which last year we were hit hard because we had to buy two sets of checks when we switched financial software. Are you, you think we're probably using a fourth of the checks that we were?
I would say so.
Right now, yeah.
Because we have, we started doing EFT deposits for all of our accounts payable claims. So it takes the vendors a couple times to get that information to us, but there's a few utilities that are not gonna work out that way, but for the most part, it's working pretty good.
Wonderful, thanks Heather. All right. Transfers addition, additional preparations is technically next on the budget.
We had nothing submitted.
Don't have any. We didn't have these submitted. All right. We technically have public coming down, I have a couple department heads here that may have some information to share, I don't think we're gonna have any commissioners that tries tonight, we have a couple of them at road, road school, I called it traffic school, I corrected myself. Definitely they're at road school.
You can take it somewhere.
That's right, I shouldn't go with traffic school. All right.
All right, well, big ticket item and really that thing that's really kind of captured everybody's attention for the last couple of months of the state has been the eclipse. So, just so you know, is, and our communication system will be much better since this transition was has been a little bit of a challenge and all the type of things, but so there's no school, there's no events planned, they not got an accounting at all, there's only two places, like Deputy in Dupont that really have, like, they're gonna be not monitored. So they're gonna be darkest area all of it for the longest. All of our county is in like ninety-five percent of of, of coverage, whatever you call it. I, I think our biggest issue is, I think our plan is solid, on top of most of the other counties around us, we had a big meeting today. And our, our plan is solid, I think our biggest issue is gonna be this traffic, it's gonna be a little. They talked about basically every major sporting event that, that does go on in Indianapolis all year is gonna be in Indianapolis at the same time. And then they're gonna release at the same time. The good thing about it is they're tripling, they slowly show up rapid, everyone wants to leave at the same time, once it's over. So basically, our plan is we just keep in good contact with, with MDOT and the County Highway to make sure the roadways are open and all of it, we're setting up a couple of, of, we're gonna pull like rescue locations. So if an ambulance might have some trouble getting someplace, whatever, others a few side by side teams are gonna come in. Some radios, we'll talk back with them, and if we have to take medic, medical personnel to them or we have to bring that person out to the medical personnel because they can get the ambulance back where it needs to get to, then, then we'll be able to transport those people back and forth. I think our biggest places are really gonna be for that, it's gonna be our outlining areas and Dupond, Deputy Southern, we'll be pretty good in the city. Of course, you know, major state highways, things like that, we thought we're gonna be open a lot of it, I'm sure the parks gonna be, gonna be full, I think downtown, probably gonna be pretty full. I think the biggest area of concern again, we're gonna have is when everybody leaves and everybody starts coming satellite on sixty-five, that's gonna get backed up, stacked up and their GPS is not gonna route them to, to tell city to go across the bridge to Kentucky, it's gonna route them to us. So we're gonna get traffic down four twenty-one, we're gonna be down seven, we're gonna cross two fifty, fifty-six to fifty-six and, and the hopes of county roads probably something.
For the announcements from VMI or as far as like if the Airbnbs and lodging options are, are really full booking, I had heard in Monroe County, we're bringing out space in the yard for people to set up tents and Flemington, a couple areas that really.
They're, they're coming in buying hotels for the.
I just, I wanna comment that I think that you've done it, because I've been at the Commissioners Meeting over the last several weeks or, you know, the last month or so. And I, you've done a really good job planning and I know you've been in state meetings and stuff with other EMA directors, but, I mean, if you don't plan, something awry could happen and it's, it's the people that aren't out for the good time, the criminals are the ones that we have to worry about. And I, I think that you guys are, you know, doing a good job planning for the what ifs. And I, and I feel so safe that you guys are doing that and I appreciate that and I hope everyone in the community appreciates your all's efforts that you're putting forth, just the what ifs.
Right, right.
There's some things you should watch for, like on social media that we can help share, I don't even have.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, there's a lot of plans, stuff like that, that we really probably just don't need to get out.
Right, absolutely.
Gonna be in, and this is how we're gonna take care of each other. Hopefully, we identify them quick and we problem solve fast. Again, we all have a good working relationship around here anyway. The counties around us have been great and so, I don't know, we only couldn't be happier at the point, and so I, I think, like you said, I don't want to sleep over a whole lot. And also I'd rather have a plan and institute the plan we got rather than try to make it up and, and put it back at the same time, it's just.
I sleep better at night just knowing that guys have promised true.
Well, thank you, and something that we are working on as well, as you remember, was it two weeks ago now, there's a cell phone outage, BTNT was down a lot of it. So we're working on a public integration set to put some graphics out to let people know how to hook their phones up to wifi if they have to make up a nine one one phone. So most people don't have land on your phone anymore or in their house anymore. And so they're relying on their cellular connection to be that nine one one resource, so we're putting that list together, what needs to be in there, their contact information, you know, what's going on, the, the, as much information as they can. So we can roll that out for people, hopefully they will see that and if they have to use it, you can text nine one one currently now. But nobody's given us a solid answer about whether, when you do connect with wifi, whether, because I know like iMessage, I think that's gonna work through finance, we're not, there shouldn't be any problems there. But if, if you're not hooked up to iMessage and or I'm not sure what the Android equivalent of that is. So we're in the process of getting that, to get that information out to people so that, so like, if they have to make it on one call, guys, we really don't. And hopefully cell systems won't go down anymore, but it probably will come soon. So just want to make sure everybody knows what they need to do with their phones to make sure that if, if they have to call them, I will come in, they have to be able to do that.
So you'd always heard, like Turning Point, for example, used to be, kind of a, people donate all phones or Verizon have a certain percentage of their refurbished phones. They were donated to Turning Point, given to women in a domestic situation where they always, and I was always told that the phone didn't have to have a cell phone plan or nine one one to still work, but in this case, it's more if their provider is out.
Yeah.
They're saying then they're fine and nine one one call, and it's been made.
Yeah, that, that's correct, it doesn't have, it doesn't have to have a SIM card and for a nine one one call be made, but it does have to have certain, actual service.
Service, okay.
So bars on the. Okay, uh, let's see here, so our communication plan's been good, that we submitted for, for our clips. And, and if you didn't know how the radio system works here, so there are seven radios within our repeater, so if seven people key up, then, then the eighth person that keys up is gonna be a busy signal, right, this is how the system ends up working, so we share that. So county and city police, county and city fire, the state hospital, the state park, the street department, County Highway Department, the ambulance service and and the state highway. So there's ten different organizations that use our trunking radio system. And you can imagine the number of people that will have those radios for the day, so that's why the communication plan we have is, we'll be switching to pulling them off of the trunking system into the pack seven channels that the, that the state has that's operating on the satellite, our UHF or VHF radios. So just, just, just so you know, and a lot of it, and so we worked and, and found out a lot of things, we learned a lot in the process of doing this, right? There's seven different vendors, there's five different vendors, sorry, within the county, between the police departments. And we're, yeah, I forgot, we have eleven people on the system. And then all the county fire departments, state fire departments, lots of them have very different vendors when it comes to the radio systems that they have. Programming map system that goes into that programming came with the radio is a lot of difference. There's emergency buttons on top of the radio, something happened, you hit the emergency button, it's supposed to tell this back where the, where they are and take priority and, and make better note and link for that radio to have communication back and forth. Lots of those are not programmed, which is scary. And there's a home button on most radios that will get you back to if you get lost on, within the programming system, trying to switch back and forth to some things, the home button takes you back, so you get back to that normal screen a lot of it and goes back to normal operation. And, and there's low visibility consistencies with the programming and those. So I'm glad we've, oh, I know we did, because we've learned a lot and then going forward, we're putting together a radio team to take a look at what's, what stakes on phase two of the trunking system that there is. So a lot of radios that we have are gonna come off of the eligibility list, or these two old technologies has gotten too far, it managed for that thing to work. So rather than, than wait until the switler happens, we're trying to figure out, okay, how can we do this maybe incrementally? What radio really is gonna serve, serve the, the biggest amount of, of, of departments in the county? And maybe we can get some consistency there with the radio program and, and even for me, radio equipment, so we need to share batteries or or respond to things back and forth a lot of it and, and God forbid something happens to someone, they pull up, grab their radio, then everybody's radio system's working across the board, we eat the same. So hopefully we get something. So we're in the process of getting ready for that. Here's gonna be on the, on the committee with us, so I'm sending a survey out to all of the affected agencies that use radio systems inside the county. So they can kind of have their input all up, it's just gonna show like what, you know, what manufacturers will look for, what options are we looking for? All those things like that, so, so more to come on that. Pardon me. Uh, let's see, we put together a boat team as well, so we talked about a boat for a long time. So that's, we're hard charging towards that, I know the mayor's office has committed some money as well and that's, they're kind of putting whatever their mouth is. Hopefully, the Coast Guard's gonna come through for us with the force security grant and that will take care of them, the bulk of it. Talked to Andy, he's been very helpful with that and so he's, he's gracious, like, gonna help us out and make sure the mayor, I can give decisions on it, so he's spending a lot of time on the waters, like. You know, he's, he's a guy to get some information from for sure. So, so again, more on that to come, our HIRA, our THIRA are completed for this year and next year, that's our hazard identification risk and our threat analysis risk assessment. In, in that process, that information goes to the state and then we get together as, as a district and then as a region to identify what training gaps that we have within those, those two instruments there to, to try to fill the gaps in the training that we may need to get, to get ourselves to close again, I guess. So we had that IPPW meeting, that's the meeting where we talked about all the training and filling those holes, all that business and, and so we identified all the training, we think that we do this in district and, and the regions identified a couple of other classes, so all those things like that have gone into fresh use, so we're getting those things just divvied out now. And all of it, and making sure that those are on the calendar. The guy that puts all that stuff in and makes arrangements for those classes was here that day for our meeting, great guy, taking care of business and so he he's grateful, wants to use the building a lot down here, a lot more than what they have before. So we partnered, well, I think we've had like five or six classes over the last few months that they've come down to do, to host here. Because I think it's a great location and the building's great, so, so that's been, been certainly a positive for us. Healthcare Coalition Conference is Thursday and Friday this week, so it'll be over there in a little bit of, the next few days. Getting, getting squirreled away with the Healthcare Coalition and have several programs and they do a couple of tabletop exercises a lot of it as well. Um, let's see, even a crossover, we talked about that just a little bit, there's been a lot of things that, that I've lost in my calendar, especially, just me now, so I can't find got a couple of different things in my calendar that I'm sure. But anyway, we're working through, Russell's been here for a little bit this afternoon, trying to help screen some things out, so hopefully that's, that's something behind this as well. Few grants that are, that are out there and pending, so I've been for an energy grant through the state and they, they said that would shake out somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure if that number's gonna lie. I think we submitted a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of, of insulating, like foam insulation spraying, the logistics building hangover, any kind of highway crap. So those are the, the two big ticket items.
That was a state grant?
Yes. We had a community foundation grant, we're just about to wrap up, stick fork in there, they've been a fantastic organization to us, they've been great, going through for us with some money that we needed for for some, some updated drone equipment, Duke Energy, same thing, they came through for us, that, that one's complete and in fact, they've even opened up another one, get ready to, to hop into that one as well. I submitted for a FEMA technical assistance grant. So we have an area downtown that's, that's labeled the Community Resilience Zone, if I'm saying the acronym right. And so, so that, inside of that zone will give us, instead of the traditional eighty, twenty grant, we supply twenty percent state supplies, eighty, we're down to ninety ten. So there's, that, that spot's been identified down there and so that's gonna give us some, or we're just gonna save ten percent of the expenses that might be directly with us. So in, in, I'm talking through that process and program with the, the mitigation people, I know Turkey Creek, is that right, one of those down, down forty-one, we discussed, caused so much flooding problems and all of it. That's, that's what we submitted, we're gonna take a look at to give us some technical assistance about the information that, that we have gotten from the city and the things they've done, they brought a few different organizations in, I think Army Corps and a couple other organizations, but but now that, that they had the data, now we need some assistance, we sort of do that and figure out, okay, how we're gonna mitigate this, this problem now with the information that we have. So had a great meeting with Senator Young's office last week and, and this was one of the things we talked about, the really big deal for, for Madison and, and Lewis investment for, for Madison and the county. And, and so they, they're hopping on board with this and, and so she's gonna, she was gonna send a letter of recommendation from, from his office to, to, to put in these applications all the same, so. So that was good news. And then I've met with a couple of different industries here in towns that have taken over and, and we've, we've talked about for a long time, all the same as having a, a cert team and and basically that's just bringing in some civilian people to, to add to our, like, medical angle response or responder. I guess cash here maybe would be a better word to use. So if we're tapped out with resources, it doesn't take a whole lot for us to be, you know, I think during any time they have three ambulances on, I come at you. And so when personnel's around a lot of it, we don't have enough ambulance system and we need some help, so. This is something I think we should have, really have tapped into really a long time ago, is we have industry folks here that who do things much better than what we do and much, much, much all day, every day, they do logistics and, and, and things, which we don't do that, that often. We have a whole lot of stuff left over from the pandemic, we got our warehouse a lot of it, but, but logistics speaking, we don't do that every day. And, and also they have emergency responders inside of most of the plants that they have in the back around here, so our, our plan is put together a little bit of a team to, to bridge that gap, to help them with some training, so all right, so. So when Shane Williams and the ambulance crew shows up, they can expect this to be taken care of by the time the ambulance gets there and locked in. And same thing is outside, you know, there for one week, show up, then, then we know what they're gonna be doing and some things that they should have taken care of with their, with their patients and or in a emergency situation that might go on, we can, we, well, information sharing and partnerships in my experience has been better for us to do those things, look that way, when we show up, we're not strangers and all of it, so I, Dwayne's been interested in the cert program and and I've got a date for you two, that's, there's a train to train a program in Indianapolis coming up, I think it's the fifteenth of April, but I'll be permanent. For you, but rather than us be independent agencies, it's nice for us to work together, we can help them some training and, and then they can help us and, and, you know, God forbid, there's a big tornado again, a lot of it, then if they don't have a factory to do the work, then, you know, I, I'm hoping that that bands will come and help us do things that we need in the community. And I'm sure probably most of them would do that, so we're trying to get that organized and look at all of it. And I think, but surely that is on the list to, to get items, ICS bedwork, communication stuff, it's towards the way, if you want some, for more information about the eclipse and the state's planning process, I've got a big packet in the office, if you want to take a look, they have a lot there, it's a lot of, lot of interesting. It's riveting and so I'll, I'll be glad when it's over with, because we've talked about it so much for the last year, year and a half. We have, it's all planned, it's all team, it's all people.
It's kind of like the Derby, man, it's all this build up, it's true, sixty seconds later, it's done, everybody leaves their trash and goes on.
No doubt, hope this will be why it can, and, you know, so, but I, I really do think we'll, we'll, what we'll see and we'll probably see more trouble afterwards, that moving leading into the next day on Tuesday and hopefully traffic will get cleared up, we'll talk to the guys in Kentucky as well about, you know, open up, build that traffic line, just keep traffic moving and and getting people's first over there all the same, because it's gonna bother like pretty big, but, but hopefully it will be another day, it'll get dark a little early and get light.
Early April could be interesting around here for severe weather too, so hopefully.
Yes, always is, always is, and have a good day and. And I hate to kind of speak ill will on us, but it's fiftieth anniversary, if you didn't remember. So.
And we're calling, just having a special time.
Really? I know the weather service, we said ask about when we were doing something and I had, we talked to, to Andrew and Gordon Barry to see what, so. Just taking that, any questions for you guys in here? Were you any questions here?
No. Thanks, I agree now.
Thank you, you all, thank you.
Mike?
Yes.
You have papers in front of you.
Sit around.
Say you have the mic, but there's really not a mic there, but you have the podium.
Thank you. Why you should messin' trash? Yeah.
Take a, take a look at today's paper. Like you mentioned, made in. Interesting, interesting decisions and things are getting cleaned up, in fact, I spent all day today with y'all, trying to, with county and looking at some of our issues that we have out there and what, what I just passed around, I would like y'all to mark April the twentieth on your calendars, because that's River's Week, y'all remember Stephanie Holmes, she had a wonderful job when she retired. So our new coordinator is Tyler Markman, that's on that sheet, everything I'm gonna tell you is on that sheet there in front of you. Gives you a little description of Orsenko, which is the organization that does the River's Week and gives you a lot of good information here about who all is involved, because the whole length of the Ohio River. So I mean, it's, it's a huge undertaking and I just happened to be down on the river last year in April and suddenly there was a guy in a, in a little tent, just like Stephanie used to have and stack of t-shirts on one side and gloves and bags and there was a big old truck parked right there in the Gotta Offles and there weren't many people down there, so I decided I'm gonna help the guy get the word out on, on this. Trash is one of, one of our veins and there's a lot of it in the county, if anybody here is going to do this week, there are just pockets of we could fill up plastic reuse container fifty times old, I mean, it's just amazing, plastic doesn't go like tires, you know, if we find them. So I would encourage you there, the materials have not come out, the publicity. So I would encourage you there. Uh the materials have not come out, the publicity materials from Orsenco yet. Tyler assures me as soon as we get them, he's gonna give them to me and I'll try to get them out to anybody who wants them. Uh there's his contact information. Uh I've already contacted Amber College. I got a location. Just let you know. But um there's a there's also there's a chart on the back which I got on the website and found. This gives you Ohio River weekly quality report. It tells you, you notice there's some blank uh at the bottom of the chart or some blank spots. That gives you the level of uh contamination in the Ohio River on on that weekly basis, but since it's so cold, they don't want to track it right now. So as soon as it starts getting warming up and and that kind of thing, you'll be able to see that. Very interesting chart. But those folks do that and and I think it's it's a great thing for them to do. But it's a worthwhile cause. I encourage you, if you know any groups, uh church groups, whatever, would like to get involved, uh and if families, sororities, colleges, any schools, anything that you can help us with getting the word out. Cuz we didn't get the word out too good last year. So I say we because I feel like I'm kind of responsible too. Cuz I helped every year. It's a great, great. Uh I wouldn't say it's a great time, but it's it's a lot of work and uh the city's gonna provide a track for at least one. And I think we if we get enough spots, we'll probably get more than one. So but it's April twentieth.
I will mention because it's the April designated, it's Earth Month. That week also, and I'll get it to you cuz that'd be great for you to have and we can share it with Tyler. Um I just happen to know this cuz it's a committee that I chair. Our the area, our Jefferson County Tobacco Educator is working with Purdue Extension. They're leading the efforts. And we're doing um like a cigarette butt, cigarette butts are labeled as the number one most littered item. Um and it's just a good week to do this cigarette butt cleanup effort because it is Earth Month and kind of leading up to Earth Day. So um there's gonna be a collective walk, but then there's a push um to try and get people to pick up trash on their own in their own neighborhoods, but specifically um targeting parks. And then if you clean up trash in any Jefferson County park, there's some hashtags. You can take a picture and share it on social media, but there's a flyer they're working on and it's the week of April fifteenth. So I'll make sure that crew knows about the River Sweep on the twentieth and I'll get the flyer to you as well. Yes. Try and share that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Any questions for me? Anything we're doing good in the county or bad in the county? You must have. Handle coming spring break starts on the nineteenth. So well, this is what a great way to start your spring break. They'll be gone.
Most of them will be gone.
They'll be out of here.
But they do have a recycling club on campus. Um yeah, I know I know a lot of their restaurants. It's not all of them, but most of them will be gone. They leave. It starts the twenty-second round of class, but most of them will be gone by now.
We have any leftovers that can come down and help. Free t-shirt. Free t-shirt, yeah.
Would you update them about the property on seven and um did they commissioner settle on a installment for the property on seven? I know we talked about it at the. Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah, what they've done is they've asked him to complete, is he, basically the planning commission forgave the fines. The fines were twenty-five thousand dollars, which is that's a hefty fine. And it goes way back. It's basically twenty-five dollars a day that he wasn't in compliance up to a certain point. So you can imagine how long he wasn't in compliance. But anyway, uh they looked at that and said, we'll forgive that if you agree to do certain things. And the commissioners basically said, okay, he still owes us a little over three thousand dollars for the cleanup. So the cleanup uh and uh the property was untaxed last tax sale, but it didn't sell. The the I believe the tax sale price was a little bit of up, I think thirty-five thousand, I think around that that price. So it did not sell. So basically, um and I don't understand all the legal ramifications, but basically right now the commissioners have given him uh till uh the next commissioner meeting to pay off the the uh basically the work the county has done, which is a little over three thousand dollars. And then basically to find out how he's gonna clean that up. And if he hasn't had a good definition on the plan, I think we'll give him some help.
One of the things I found interesting is I really, I didn't guess I didn't realize that there was an ordinance about RVs on properties.
Yes.
For fourteen consecutive days, someone cannot. I didn't realize that that was an ordinance.
To live in it. Yes.
Even if it's hooked up to a septic system. So I thought, even though that one's not. Can you be hooked up to a septic system and have a RV on your property?
I refer that to all our our legal staff. Fourteen days, basically. We we basically don't want people living in full time in a RV because they're not set up to use them in here.
Okay.
They're not insulated. Uh it it's just not set up for that.
Okay.
So that's basically why it's next there.
Alright.
It's pretty good. It's pretty good on us. I think that the paper said it has to be moved every two weeks. But uh again, if you're storing your RV, it's your RVs in the summertime, you store it on your property, that's not the issue.
Right, right. Yeah. I was just asking cuz I know there are some in the county that.
There are? Yes, there are. And we're as we find them, we we make the occupants aware of it.
Okay.
Okay. But if you see something, I guess I guess it'll say, you see something, say something. That helps us because again, we uh there's a lot of properties that we haven't got cleaned up that need to be cleaned up. The ones we give reports on, those are the ones we focus on.
Well, they're just, it's not safe either. So.
That's the big thing. The safety, when you think about it, when you see some of the uh situations that are out there, there's a lot of automobiles. There's been an obviels trash and it's just breeding ground for germs and vermin and everything else. So we want to make sure we get cleaned up.
And I do think uh what I've run into is some of these individuals, they're being rented to the individuals that reside in them. Not knowing that that's not legal. So.
Let us know. Alright. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Alright. Any additional topic comments? Okay. I think we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ray. Second, my Dwayne. Alright, I think it's those are in favor. Yes, alright. We'll see everybody in April.